By ninth meeting of the common council to order at seven o'clock. Would you all rise as Megan Wildes lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great body for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wildes.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. President, you have the forum.
Thank you. I have approval of the executive session memorandum from June 25th.
Move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the memorandum from June 25th. All's in favor, please raise your right hand. Eight zero. Approval of the minutes for our June 25th meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
There's a motion to approve our minutes and a second from the June 25th meeting. This is a hand vote, all's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight to zero. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agendas presented.
Flagging.
Motion to approve our agenda and a second. This is a hand vote, all's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight oh. Petitions by citizens, petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I have three is the, we turn that down a little bit. Petitions by, petitions or comments by citizens who are present, I have three cards in front of me, if anyone else would like to speak, they can fill out a white card out front and hand it to our clerk. First up, I have Courtney Culp.
I've done this before. My name is Courtney Culp and I am at 17946 Forest and Oak Drive in Noblesville. And I'm here today to talk about the trees. I'm going to speak fast because I know I have a limited amount of time. I recently said to the Noblesville mayor, Jensen, Chris, this didn't need to be this difficult. Yet, this administration insists that to repair sidewalks, the city must cut down almost all mature trees in Oakmont. These conversations should start by asking, how can we save trees while fixing the sidewalk? And ideas should flow from that place. Instead, the conversation starts with, how can we pour concrete? And all the, all the trees are cut down. Homeowners shouldn't have to involve the press. All of this could have been avoided if, with governance that respects the constituents and seeks compromise. Jensen mentioned a 20-year street rehabilitation plan suggesting that the city aims to not revisit streets for repairs sooner, except for emergencies and unexpected events. On March 25th, and this meeting was recorded in this room, I think, or maybe one of these rooms, Andrew Roderwald explained that before any street repair could happen, trees and sidewalks would be handled. But he said that the street rehabilitation is driving the project. Please check the recording. If this is the case, and Jensen implies that repairs must ideally endure 20 years, are we not to believe that the city wants sidewalks to last this long too? And so it follows that every option we suggest to the city is rejected due to the estimated duration of repair. Over and again, that is the feedback. Against this 20-year bar, conversations in compromise are over before they even began. For that matter, concrete, concrete cannot remain unblemished for 20 years. So we must conclude that Noblesville's commitment to remain a Tree City USA city and its claims for caring about a tree canopy are mere rhetoric. Sidewalk repair decisions hinge solely on whether they guarantee 20 years of durability. Mature, life sustaining trees are not part of the conversation. Property taxpaying homeowners' concerns are also not part of the conversation. As we face imminent, because you said today 55% done, and massive mature tree loss due to government inflexibility, lack of innovative thinking, and lack of creativity, our focus will shift to future battles in Oakmont, as well as the city as a whole. Is this the Noblesville that we desire of mature, a place stripped of mature trees, full of urban heat islands, poor air quality, overflowing storm drains, higher utility costs, and very limited outdoor comfort? Per Chris, the, in Noblesville, the city interacts with individual communities through over 90 HOAs. Despite starting discussions with the city about street and sidewalk repairs in Oakmont in July of 2023, our HOA did not mention the city's plans for tree removal, sidewalk repairs, or street maintenance until February of 2024. Almost seven months of silence later. Isn't that interesting? Isn't that ironic? I guess it's fortunate that our HOA didn't inform Oakmont residents about the city's plans earlier, because dealing with unhappy residents just before an election might have been a hassle. Alternatively, if Oakmont residents had been involved earlier, we could have collaborated with the city to create a plan that showcases Noblesville as a green, environmentally conscious city. And that would have been a positive story, leading into an election, potentially boosting voter turnout. It didn't need to be this challenging. It did not need to be this challenging. Fair and just governance should not be this challenging. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ella Worley.
My name is Ella Worley and I live in the Oakmont neighborhood. And this is a, this is an email that I wrote to the mayor. Hello, mayor. My name is Ella Worley. And I'm 13 years old. And one of the miners, I got interviewed about the trees. I want to start off with saying that the kids of Oakmont are just devastated by the trees getting taken out. It has left all the kids of Oakmont so sad that they don't have any trees to climb or play around anymore. It has left the sidewalks unbelievably hot and no shade at all. This makes it hard to play outside and enjoy being outdoors. It would, I would like to add that we would like, that we would like safe sidewalks. My parents have always taught me to work together to solve problems and make compromises. And that is something I haven't witnessed through our trees being taken out. By the time the new trees grow, the kids who have, who had to live through this tragedy won't be kids anymore. And since we're kids, we don't get a say in this type, in these type of things. Us miners don't have the power that the adults do. And again, we just don't get a say in this. It's not fair to us kids, and while I understand that we're miners, our opinions should matter too, should matter just as much as the adults' opinions, especially when it comes to something this heartbreaking. I live in, I live on Harden Oak Drive, which means almost all of our trees have been taken out, including the three beautiful ones in front of our house. I love our neighbors and our community, but it's not the same without the trees. I ask you to please listen to us kids too, and not just the adults. This is our neighborhood too, so our opinions of things should matter just as much. I'm writing this to you so you can hear just how devastated we all are. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Mark Roderman.
I'm part of the mayor, don't cut down the street group. So, I'm actually here for my wife, Wesley. She's talked to a number of you, and to you, mayor. So, she, she asked me to read this, and I will just, she said, she is profoundly disappointed in this council and mayor. So, we moved to the neighborhood about a year and a half ago, and we moved there because of the trees, because of the red trees in the fall, because of the children, grandchildren could play in the trees because of the shade, because of the canopy. It was a beautiful, it was a beautiful neighborhood. We looked for about a year and a half, actually, I'm sorry, about a year. And we found this place, and it was about the trees. We picked it because of the trees. It was, it, it almost feels like bait and switch. I realize it's not. It feels that way to us. Now, our community's disfigured. My wife is sad, my neighbors are sad, and my neighborhood is in shock. So here's what I'd like to do, I, I realize I don't know what any of us can do, but what I'd like for you to do, I invite you to drive through our neighborhood. I live on Harden Oak, across the street from Ella, this young lady. Our trees are gone, and I've been into some of the other streets, they're mowed down. So, we're, it's, 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 the trees are gone. It's scorched earth. So what I ask you to do is drive through, look for yourself. Look and see, how would you feel if you drove into your neighborhood and your trees, the beauty of your neighborhood was sawed down, cut away? So, I, I've only been there a year and a half, I don't know about, I don't know the history, but something's not right here. I've lived in communities where we managed our canopies, our trees, our sidewalks. We would cut away maybe three or four or five a year, we managed the sidewalks, we kept our trees and we kept our canopy. Something, something's wrong here. I, I would only ask all of you to visit, visit our community and ask yourselves, what went wrong? What happened? Thank you.
Thank you.
Blind Hunting Agency.
Council, how are y'all doing today? Pleasure to be here. Prior speaker speaks about-
State, state your name and your address.
DJ Gambino, 1311 Sheridan Road, sir.
Thank you.
Prior speaker speaks about being in shock. Council, I am in shock. Council, without counsel and a system that serves, who are we? I'm here today to talk about, I made a, an acronym, In Noblesville Bullying Now. Far too long have I had to deal with bullying in this community. I'm a longtime resident, I've been here for 30 years, sir. And I have to tell you, sir, today, and among the council members, bullying is a serious problem. Leads to suicidal behavior, it leads to people not having work, it leads to places that we can't even go because of bullying in this community. And it's been going on for far too long. Now, I myself have been subjected to bullying since the first grade. I'm an Indianapolis resident, I came from Chicago, and I'm here to tell you all today, and specifically you, Mr. Smith, that it just can't go on. Disrespect unchecked. Without respect, this community has no standing. Without respect, without having respect for your common man and woman, who are we? Finally, and in closing, this is a rally cry. And let me say something. I'm asking the audience, I'm asking the people who are here today, to stand against bullying because it has no place in our community, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the cards I have. If there's anyone else who would like to speak? If not, we'll go to the mayor's comments.
Evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Great to be with you. I wanted to update you on a few projects around town, but before, before doing that, I obviously would like to address and thank the residents who took time to be here tonight, especially Ella. She sent me an email that she read you earlier. I got that earlier today, and I will respond to you. But that's incredibly brave. As a father of a 13-year-old, there's no way he would be standing up here doing what she did tonight. So, that's incredibly, incredibly brave, and Ella, I appreciate you taking time to do that and be here tonight. I want to address a few items that were mentioned. Ms. Culp was up here earlier today, I get a chance to speak with her every morning. She calls me at 7:00 AM, and we chat about this project. And I obviously take issue with some of the points that she made. I first of all, want to thank Andrew Roderwald and our engineering department. I can't say enough great things about that department and how hard they've worked and what they've had to endure the last several weeks is simply really unfair to them. So I just want to just go on record in thanking Andrew Roderwald, Ali Kupsky, Jim Hellman, that entire team down there. They are working really hard. We have a large city of 77,000 people, thousands of miles of roadways, and Ms. Culp is correct. We aim for a, you all know this, a 20-year cycle of road rehabilitation, that is our goal. In a city our size, we're not often able to meet that goal, we're doing the best that we can. This project, as you all know, started about seven years ago, in a prior administration when Oakmont was, was targeted to be addressed on their street rehabilitation program. The prior administration decided to back away from that project, and I can admit, as a city councillor, I'm not sure the communication was handled correctly. Fast forward to last year, and it was long past time to address not only the roadway within Oakmont, but anytime we do address a street rehabilitation, we also take a look at the sidewalk evaluation. And oftentimes, those sidewalks are damaged due to tree issues. We did reach out to the HOA as a first point of contact, that is oftentimes protocol for the mayor's office. Not every neighborhood has an HOA, but we do our best to reach out to the leadership that is elected by that, by that, that neighborhood to represent them, to start this conversation. We knew from day one, we have known from day one, that this would be a very difficult conversation. I've addressed that every time I've talked to a resident there, I've addressed it every time I've talked to every one of you. I know none of us would love if a beautiful tree in from our home had to be removed. That is very difficult, and we, we acknowledge that. We reached out to the HOA and said we wanted to do things correctly seven years later by making sure that we communicate appropriately. We offered to host a meeting here at City Hall in March of this past year to discuss the project. I started that, for that, that meeting with the same statement I made here today, that this is a difficult conversation, these are going to be hard conversations, we want to listen, we want to hear, but at the same time, we have to move forward with what is best for the entire community going forward. We then fast forward, I was invited to attend a community meeting in May, where myself, Matt Light, Andrew Roderwald, John Easley, who also is owed a bill of thank you for this project as well too, went out for an hour and a half to listen and talk with the, with the neighbors who were there, about 60 to 65 neighbors who were there that evening as well. Just for the quick facts of this project, there, we are taking about 135 trees out of the neighborhood, which equates to about 23% of the street trees. Of that 23%, 70%, nearly 70% of those will be replaced. Our goal is, they will be replaced in probably next spring due to planting season. We have learned a lot over the course of the past 25 years since neighborhoods like Oakmont were developed. We know better planting practices, we know better species, and so our goal is not to have this conversation in 20 years from now with this neighborhood. Hopefully, we do our job and plant a better tree in better locations, that won't be as negatively impacted, and it will not negatively impact the sidewalk going forward. So that is the process that we are in, it's a very difficult one, I acknowledge that. But our goal is to listen, to learn, to, to do the best we can, but to make decisions for the long term of all 75,000 residents who live in the city of Noblesville. So I just wanted to kind of go over some of those things. My phone is always on, ask Ms. Culp, she calls it every morning. My email is available, I answer Facebook messages, text messages, you name it. I've been called every name under the sun, my kids have been called things, it, I, I get it. We're here, I will listen, I will talk, we are all human beings, trying to do the best we can with the situation in front of us, and we're going to move forward. And I appreciate your support and your help with that going forward. Now, on other things, I would like to also take a moment and thank our first responders, our Parks Department, and our Street Department, who put on an awesome Fourth of July in the city of Noblesville. We luckily had the weather gods on our side, which Noblesville oftentimes does, and we were able to dodge the rain and had an incredibly successful parade, even going down a different street, Clinton Street. Everyone got the memo, they were all there, and it probably was the most crowded parade I have seen in at least five years here in the city of Noblesville. So I appreciate those residents on Logan Street for being willing to walk over a block, Mr. Peterson. And I told those folks on Clinton Street, it's one year only, enjoy your front row seat to Noblesville Parade, but it was awesome. We got to honor the Navy Club here in Noblesville as our grand marshal, which was, which was really exciting, and they were tickled. They're in the parade every single year, they just got bumped up to the front, and they were, they were tickled by that honor, and we were glad to do it for them. We had an awesome festival at Forest Park with a wonderful 80s cover band. Kudos to Savannah Soldier Wines, the new Parks Director, and her team who really pieced this together, kind of flying, building the plane as they flew it this year a little bit. But they did an incredible job and spaced things out, we had a record crowd that night. So, and thank you to Ally Boyce, who sang the National Anthem for us as well that night. So I just wanted to say thank you, because that is a all-hands-on-deck operation on a holiday, to make sure that we get all those people in and out of downtown and in and out of Forest Park safely. And oh, by the way, with some, a little bit of construction going on in downtown as well. So, kudos to all those folks who, who worked on that. Speaking of construction, we are nearing the end of the State Road 32 downtown project. You may have seen in the Indy Star, love reading about it there, the tanks that were found, discovered along the way, that is a state project, they did discover some tanks, they're doing some testing. Our hope is that that doesn't get delayed, but just more than a couple days. Hopefully wrapping that up by the end of the month-ish, just for a little, to give us some wiggle room there. But again, thank you to all the downtown merchants, all the downtown residents. I drive it every day and weave my way through, and I just appreciate everyone's patience with that project as well. You well know that if you're on Aliceville Road, that is now open in all directions, which has helped some flow of traffic. If you, for some reason, would want to go to a city to the southwest, I'm not sure why you'd want to do that, but if you did, it is a little bit easier for you to, to access that area as well. So, again, it is the height of construction season, not only in Indiana, anyone who travels across the country, it is everywhere. But I appreciate everyone bearing with us as we move through those projects. So, with that, that's a kind of a quick update, I'm sure you'll cover in some of your reports, but happy to take any questions. But again, just want to end by saying thank you to our residents, especially Ella, for being brave and coming tonight and speaking, speaking about those projects. That's what we're here to do, is listen and hear from the folks and represent them, and you all do a fine job with that. So, with that, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
On to council committee reports. Mr. Davis, Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met July 3rd. Dave Johnson, Aaron Smith, Megan Wildes, and myself. Andrew Murray discussed a tax abatement, compliance confirmation, and Caitlin Moss gave us an update on the 2023 ACFR and financial audit results. Ian Zalgowski gave us an update on the 2024 Year One Bond Series AMV. And he also gave us an update on the summary of routine appropriation transfers per RC-1-24 Section 1, Quarter 2, 2024. of routine appropriation transfers per RC-1-24 Section 1, Quarter II, 2024. Caitlin Moss finished it up with an update for the summary of appropriation of grant proceeds per RC-2-24 Quarter II, 2024. That and the claim stock that comes with the council was a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the claims presented.
Second.
Is the motion to approve the claims in second? There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight oh. Miscellaneous number one. Council to receive a yearly report from the Indiana Peony Festival. Kelly McVeigh.
Hello. Thanks for allowing me to be here today. I'm Kelly McVeigh with the Indiana Peony Festival. First of all, I want to thank you guys for your trust and your support this year in providing us with a public purpose grant. And I'd like to take just a few minutes. We're super excited about how 2024, you know, happened. And we are excited to kind of tell you about how your support helped us make a very successful peony festival. So first of all, we'll just talk about the festival itself really quickly. It happened on May 18th. And hold on. Okay, there we go. And how about two slides? Is he still in here?
He's coming back. He saw you paning.
So first of all, I'll just talk about the attendance. So we were a little worried, you know? There was a lot of construction going on, you know, for the festival. And we had quite a bit of attendance in 2023. So we were very excited here. Our attendance arose by 30% in 2024. So we had anywhere from 30,000 to 35,000 people attend the festival this year. Now, where do I touch? Is anywhere? Okay. So we had a 30% increase from 2023, which we thought was spectacular. We've been working with the Hamilton County Business Bureau on the numbers. And we feel that that is a very conservative number from 30,000 to 35,000. The other cool thing that we're realizing is out of area. People that travel in over 50 miles was up 70% from last year. And we're now at like 5,000 people that came in from over 50 miles away, which is fantastic. And, you know, we were dealing with things with road closures. The other thing that we're still looking at these numbers is their numbers kind of skew funny. If there's a lot of kids at the festival, we have a ton of kids at the festival. The mean age is somewhere in the low 30s that attend the festival. So the amount of strollers and balloons and, you know, so we think that that number could and will probably rise. But and also AT&amp;T users. If you're an ATT user at the festival, you couldn't get any service that day from all the way from the farmer's market downtown to the festival. What that tells me is the crowd was super big and much bigger even than last year. So vendors, I don't know if you guys realize it, but we doubled the amount of vendors that we put in the park this year. It was huge. We had 125 vendors. We doubled to tripled the amount of food vendors we had. So we had over 18 food vendors, and we could use a lot more. We had 26 floral vendors, still could use more floral vendors. The amount of flowers there was unbelievable. We did a vendor survey. And of those people that did the survey, 100% of them want to come back and be a part of the festival. So that tells us it was a good day for vendors. The ones that filled out the survey as well, that were in 2023 and did 2024, many of them doubled their sales. So that tells you that the crowds were really, really good. The footprint, too. I mean, we talked a lot about, yeah, we expanded on 10th Street, but the footprint doubled. And if you went to the festival, it was still packed. So in 2023, we had 960 feet of, you know, walking space. In 2024, we added over 1,000. We had 2,000 feet plus the park, and it was still packed. What was really great this year, we worked with planning and engineering, and they put together the most wonderful map. And that really helped our attendees. We heard so many great things about the map and how it got them around construction and how they found parking. And we really, we really worked with Andrew and our team. And we couldn't be happier with how that turned out. We also have new, we got authorization to park at Ivy Tech and Stony Creek Park. And we got shuttles to go to those places. We also had a new ADA area for parking. That ADA, I worked it for a while. It was packed with ADA stickers, people coming in and out. So that warmed my heart because what that told me is we weren't doing a good enough job in past years for ADA, and we could still use more ADA parking. But it was so good to see them park in that city lot, get out and be able to walk just a block or two, both to downtown and the festival. We got two shuttles this year, the ones to go directly to Ivy Tech and to Stony Creek. And I talked to people that were coming down from the shuttles. They're like, you need buses. You don't need shuttles out there. It's, you know, so we need to look at that. But so that was interesting. We also use Friends Church as a respite center for our vendors, and they loved that. They were able to use the bathrooms. And we have such a great partner with Friends Church. They really, they work so well with us and allow us to really use their facilities. So festival, the florals this year. Last year, we had 16 floral displays. This year, we had 20. We bought another, we bought 2,300 peonies for those displays. So we have a ton of displays. And that's something that we really want to work on is the beautification and how we really amp that up into 2025. Volunteers went from 65 to over 100 this year. So that was fantastic. And we have a ton of information on our marketing. But our marketing people work all year round on this. And just our website traffic alone, there's a lot of stuff here. But I'm just going to say there's 80, we had 89,000 unique users in April and May on our website. They came from every state in the country. And they came from other countries as well. But we had 89,000 this year. Last year, we had 58,000 that came through. So our website is showing like huge numbers. These are just some of the top states that were, you know, getting on the website and looking at it, you know, Illinois, North Carolina, Ohio, Michigan, New York. Our social media, our social media people and marketing people are so unbelievable. But they, we actually had 2.3 million impressions in April and May, yeah, on social media. Our paid marketing, which was Cumulus and Fox 59, stuff like that, that gave us another 1.3 million. So you're talking about 3.6 million in just social media and paid marketing. That doesn't talk about signage and PR and email blast and everything else that we did. So we're probably talking 5 million impressions in April and May that the Peony Festival gives our community. So it's a lot of exposure. So that's really kind of the numbers for the festival. We felt like we doubled just about everything at the festival, and it ran as smooth as ever. So we were super excited. There's still things that we need to work on. But, you know, we did, I think our bathrooms were the issue last year. And I think we have 10, we had 10 times bathrooms this year. We didn't have any complaints there. So the festival was great. What I really want to talk about, too, is our downtown, our Brunch and Blooms and downtown recap, because that is what gets me excited. We got a major sponsor this year, Gaby Home Furnishings, and it was really cool. They are celebrating their 50th anniversary. So they really want to give back to the Peony Festival, but they really want to give back to downtown businesses. They started 50 years ago in a small shop in Sheridan. And they're like, we want to give back to your downtown. So we got them to sponsor, Lacy Buildings sponsored our window displays. And then we had somebody named Lindsey McVeigh that worked her tail off to get people to participate and get businesses excited. So we had 40 businesses participate in Brunch and Blooms. Last year, we had 25. We had 23 businesses do window displays. It was fantastic, you know? And all of them did such cool stuff. And I heard from so many attendees that that is their favorite part, go downtown and see what the businesses are going to be giving them and providing and what they're doing. So we had great participation. We are downtown with a 10, and we make, you know, every year, we get better at this. We had, we passed out over 1,000 Brunch and Blooms maps. We had 20 volunteers down there working at setup, teardown. In fact, I'm going to give call out to Ace Hardware. They are amazing. Our Noblesville Ace was there to set up, to tear down. They brought volunteers, and they put tables up. They're amazing. So please, please go to Noblesville Ace Hardware. They're awesome. So anyway, and we did have two coordinators downtown all day. And so my big thing is, you know, we think it went smoothly, but let's hear what the businesses said. So we've got testimonials from quite a few of the businesses. And this is a taste of what we hear about what happened that day. This is Ice Ray Bistro. We've participated in Brunch and Blooms every year and have seen exponential growth. Makes for a very successful Saturday for the bistro in terms of sales. And we have repeat business from the event to our regular dinner service. They also said it was their best year to date. This is from Wild Bohemian. The Peony Festival is our mid-year boost we need financially and truly was a saving grace this year with road closures. She also went on to say that it rivals her Small Business Saturday numbers. Alexanders, I love this one. She said they increased their business 30% from last year, but the most exciting part was new people that have never been to downtown Nobles before. But they get to encounter those new people. And the Peony Festival is a winning place to be. Peony Poppy, a new shop in town, said the Peony Festival is a huge hit. That got so many eyes on her store. In that respect, it's invaluable. It's also just a darling idea all around, and I love that it's in our city. Thistle and Time, she had a lot to say. But what I will say, you know, sake of time, is the Peony Festival this year outperformed last year's Small Business Saturday. And I think that's big. She also said your communication with merchants is stellar. Not only do you plan a fantastic event, but you also communicate where we feel like we're part of it. And I think that's, you know, that's what we want. We want to inspire everybody to like get on board and do fun stuff. Charisma, she had her record day. It was wall-to-wall people all day. She didn't, oh, she heard complaints about how busy it was, but she didn't hear any complaints about traffic or parking. She was, she couldn't believe it. And then Robin Wilson from Noble Coffee. On Festival Day 2024, the cafe set a record for the most recorded tickets, and the most people threw their cafe in one day. Wow. And they've been around a long time. So through those testimonials, I think the downtown and the festival, we had a great day. It just, and we couldn't have done it without your support. I mean, the amount of equipment, the amount of tents, everything that we we had to double and triple this year was amazing. So that's what we do, you know, for the festival. We work all year. But really quickly, I don't know, I'm probably over my 10 minutes. But we work on the Peony Trail all year round. We try to plant 900 to 1,000 peonies every year. And, you know, we're just starting to see the benefits. I mean, peonies sleep, they creep, and then they leap. So this year was the first year they leaped in some areas. If anybody saw the courthouse on the west side during peony season, those yellow Sunny Girls were amazing, the coral charms. We're just seeing the benefits of this Peony Trail. So this year, we've already got 17 new businesses, 350 peonies planted. This fall, we'll be doing another 600. We also have the Peony Passport, and I have those there for you guys. It's a way, oh, you got them, great. It's the way that we are going to be able to have tourists come and do self-guided tours. So it's just the beginning of what we're working on there. I could go into that. But we also are doing flower markets. We do those now. We used to do them in the alley, but now we're doing back at Seminary Park. And we do them the last Thursday of every month. And so we're working all year round. And, you know, we just really appreciate your support. We appreciate the support of Mayor Jensen. He doesn't realize how much it does for us. And our public safety team, the Parks is there all day. Police, fire, I mean, police officers, oh my gosh. The Streets Department, our volunteers and our committee. We have such a great community. And I think the Peony Festival is a great display of our community coming together and doing some great stuff. So, yep, thanks. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
This is the third or fourth year?
That was the fourth year.
I just have one thing to add. And I mean, obviously, she wouldn't say it because she's doing the presentation, but none of this would happen without Kelly McVeigh.
Right.
I now have a pink Sid's shirt that has flowers on it. Like, that would not ever happen without Kelly McVeigh. And so you do a great job of rallying our downtown.
Thanks.
Do we know what the date is for next year?
May 17. It's always the Saturday before Memorial Day.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Kelly. Thank you.
Congratulations.
On the previous discussed ordinances, council to consider ordinance 240624 and ordinance annexing approximately 5.9 acres at 16864 Union Chapel Road in Noblesville Township and Resolution RC 2424 adopting a fiscal plan. Joyce Ann Yelton.
Good evening. About 30 days ago, I was here, and we introduced this ordinance. Again, it is a super voluntary annexation for approximately six acres. It is located at the Roundabout at Town and Country and Union Chapel Road. We ask that you set tonight as the public hearing for the ordinance and would ask that we come back in two weeks, and then you would vote on that ordinance. As for the resolution of the fiscal plan this evening, it should be noted that, again, this ordinance does meet the continuity requirements of annexation. Municipal services to this area, a lot of those services, I'm going to say, are currently provided because they are in our zoning jurisdictional area. So like Fire Department already serves this area because of the, an agreement that we have to extend fire services to Noblesville Township. Street Department basically already takes care of the street because Union Chapel Road is basically already inside the city limits. So most of the big capital items that would be extended to this property are currently existing. The city does also provide non-capital services. Those services would include things such as planning, zoning, for the most part. The administration, obviously, if it wants it's annexed to the city limits, you know, obviously gets some additional services. Protected revenues in this area, currently it is a vacant piece of property. They eventually want to construct a single-family home on that property. Don't know if that's happening next year, 60 days, you know, six months from now. So technically, the projected revenues for the city of Noblesville versus the costs are very slight. With that, I will ask if you have any questions?
Any questions? Seeing no questions, I will open up the public hearing for ordinance 240624.
Mr. President, seeing no one come forward, I would move that we close a public hearing for ordinance number 24-06-24.
Second. Is the motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 240624 in a second? There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve Resolution RC-24-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve, our motion to approve Resolution RC 2424 in a second? There's a hand vote. All's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight oh.
Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance 270624 and ordinance amending Section 30.08 of the Noblesville City Code regarding use of credit cards by employees. Caitlin Moss.
Good evening.
Good evening. Caitlin Moss, Deputy Controller. Um, so a couple of weeks ago, I was here for the first reading of this ordinance. Um, just a couple of reminders that this action is just a modernization. It's not a new policy. Um, there was nothing that happened that caused this to be changed. It's just us kind of catching up with the times. Um, and that the changes that we are proposing are specifying when an employee may no longer utilize a credit card, timing and requirements for submitting receipts, authorizing the city to pay a credit card fee, banning the use of a digital wallet for the credit card, and, um, what actions are required to be taken to prevent fraud. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 27-06-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 270624 in a second. There's a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyes.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 280724 and ordinance adopting text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding Article II definitions, Article VIII zoning districts, and Appendix C official schedule of uses, creating a new zoning classification of Innovation Mile District, IMD, including uses and bulk standards.
Move to introduce. Second.
And council to consider ordinance 290724 and ordinance adopting a change of zoning from the Corporate Campus Plan Development District to Innovation Mile, including land use areas and sub-districts for property from Interstate 69 on the south to approximately 1,300 feet north of East 146th Street.
Move to introduce.
Denise Ashelman.
Hello.
Second. Denise Ashelman.
Um, I think most of you know that I've spent the majority of my last two years here at the city working on a little project we know as Innovation Mile. Um, you adopted the master plan for the area in November 2023. Um, actually, Ms. Reed presented that to you because I decided to go to Hawaii. But, um, we since then have been working on, um, the zoning regulations that actually enforce and bring to life those regulation, or those visions that were made in that Innovation Mile master plan. So, um, we have proposed new definitions. Um, the amendments to Article VIII actually are the creation of a brand-new zoning district, um, and also the sub-districts that relate to that. Um, this map actually is an example of how those sub-districts would lay out within the district. Um, and then the last part, Appendix C, is the creation of the permitted uses and special considerations within that district. Um, some highlights on the zoning district as part of the adoption of the, uh, planned unit development for, um, the event center. We created what we call the Innovation Mile Review Committee. Um, that actually has been implemented for the whole district, um, and is included in this. It, it, it is comprised of two, um, Plan Commission members, two council members, and then in a different step, we actually have three members of staff that are on that committee as voting members as well. Um, it would be Ms. Reed, Mr. Murray, our Economic Development Director, and then Ally Kropsky, our City Engineer. So, um, they can hear waivers and things like that would normally go to the Plan Commission. You can be heard by this committee. Um, so that's the first part, actually adopting the regulations and putting them in place in our ordinance. And then the second part is, um, adoption of the IMD zoning district and defining the ground that that applies to. So generally, it's an area 1,300 feet north of 141st Street. Uh, it goes south to I-69, and it spans the area between, um, Oleo Road and Cynthia Road. Um, there are some existing residential users out there. In keeping with the regulations of the corporate campus, we adopted the regulations from the corporate campus that allow those uses to stay. Um, we did have some remonstrance at the Plan Commission from specifically the Crystal Creek neighborhood, and I'm just going to point them out because most of you probably don't know where it is. Um, it is a small, single-road subdivision off 146th Street. They are currently unincorporated. Um, and only two properties from that subdivision actually are rezoned as part of this. Um, the two properties at the very end of the street. Um, they did have some concerns with the adoption of the master plan. Um, the master plan document actually shows the extension of Crystal Creek Drive to 141st Street when it is extended. Um, we, this is sent to you with a vote of seven one from the Plan Commission recommending adoption to address the concern about the road. Staff is committing that before extension of that road happened, engineering and planning would study whether that is the option that should happen. And if it isn't, we, we go back and amend the master plan, um, map to show the road either cul-de-sac in or just at ending. Um, but we are committing that we would not do that extension without looking at whether it was the option that needed to happen. Um, again, it comes to you, both of these come to you with a recommendation to adopt seven to one.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 28-07-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 280724 in a second. There's a roll call vote.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyes.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 29-07-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 290724 in a second. There's a roll call vote.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyes.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 300724 and ordinance adopting a change of zoning from office flex to commercial office for approximately 4.45 acres south of East 146th Street and west of Howe Road.
Move to introduce. Second.
And council to consider ordinance 310724 and ordinance adopting a change of zoning and adoption of a preliminary development plan, including waivers for approximately 4.45 acres south of East 146th Street and west of Howe Road, to be known as Howe Campus Corner.
Move to introduce. Second.
Joyce Ann Yelton.
Good evening again. This is a piece of property that, again, is approximately four and a half acres. It is located at the southwest corner of Howe and East 146th Street. It is for a change of land use category to commercial office with a sub-district overlay of 146th Street corridor. That is a part of the corporate campus. Um, the public hearing was held at the Plan Commission. It was sent forward with a favorable recommendation for adoption by an eight zero zero vote. Um, this is their, basically, their development plan. This is the location of the Garden Office Building. This is the Wawa, and this is the fuel, uh, canopy area. Um, here are some, um, elevations that were included as part of the Wawa Fuel Center. And this is an illustrated building elevation of the possibility of what the, um, Garden Office Building could resemble. With that, I will have answered any questions you may have of staff. The applicant is in the audience. Should you have any questions of them?
Any questions for Joyce Ann Yelton or the applicant?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 30-07-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 300724 in a second. Thirty. We're going to give Ms. Wiles a chance to vote first on something. So, there's a, uh, motion to approve ordinance 300724 in a second. There's a roll call vote.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyes.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted. It is approved.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 31-07-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 310724 in a second. This is also a roll call vote.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyes.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
I apologize, Ms. Lee's, Mr. Unger had, uh, recommended we read them, do them separately, so that's what we're doing.
Oh, I did not know.
Sorry, we should have told the clerk. Council to consider ordinance 320724 and ordinance amending ordinance 230820 for the Downtown Mixed Use District known as Lobs on 10th, to permit the construction of office, commercial, salon suites for two buildings at 1032 and 1046 Clinton Street and at 1030 and 1045 Wayne Streets.
Move to introduce. Second.
Joyce Ann Yelton.
This is an amendment to an adopted downtown mixed-use plan for the Lobs on 10th Street. As you may recall, the Lobs on 10th Street is basically a project that is a couple blocks north of here between Clinton and Wayne Street, running along 10th. The proposal would include a change of, uh, use category from what was originally a couple of single-family dwellings in this area outlined in red here, and also, uh, two single-family dwellings, um, outlined in red along Wayne Street to provide for two office, commercial, salon suites, buildings that would be located fronting Clinton and one fronting, uh, Wayne Street. Again, a public hearing was held at the Plan Commission. Plan Commission did send it forward with a favorable recommendation for adoption by an eight zero zero vote. This is basically, uh, the proposed office structures at that location. With that, I will ask if you have any questions. The applicant is in the audience.
Any questions for Joyce Ann Yelton or David Kling?
I have one question.
Yep.
Is, see, if this is new, is there required to be ADA compliant? And if so, how did the, how is it ADA compliant on the second story? I honestly don't know. I'm just curious on that. Don't need to be the one to open up a can of worms, just really curious on it.
Not at all. We deal with that question quite often. Uh, for that size building and a non-rated building, uh, second floor, does not have to be ADA, but you do have to conform that if you were to ever add anything that allows for ADA accessibility, then you can change and modify the restrooms with grab bars, et cetera. Um, if someone were to try to add some sort of lift system.
Okay.
To accommodate.
Mr. Kling, could you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, David Kling. Thank you.
Good to know. Thank you very much. I was just curious on that.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Any other questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 32-07-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 320724 in a second. There's a roll call vote.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyes.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
I was the architect for this master plan, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Seven ayes, one extension, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Council to consider ordinance 330724 and ordinance adopting a change of zoning from single-family, multifamily, commercial office flex with a sub-district of 146th Street to single-family, multifamily, and a sub-district overlay of mixed residential for approximately 39 acres west of Brook School Road and north of East 136th Street.
Move to introduce. Second.
Council to consider ordinance 340724 and ordinance adopting a change of zoning and adoption of a preliminary development plan for a total of 42 acres, allowing for approximately 39 acres of residential with a sub-district of mixed residential and three acres of commercial office flex with a sub-district of secondary corridor, including waivers for property west of Brook School Road and north of East 136th Street.
Move to introduce. Second.
Joyce Ann Yelton.
As you may recall, a few years back, uh, Hyde Park was presented to the council, and that included several projects. At that time, um, some of the projects have already been presented to the council. This is a project that is located, um, along 136th Street here. The red area basically being the commercial area, this area being the residential, as well as residential, that is also in the blue area north of the detention pond that's there. Again, this particular area, um, contains a total of 42 acres. Approximately three acres of it will be zoned commercial for a neighborhood retail use. Um, the public hearing, again, was held at the Plan Commission. The residential uses proposed are both town homes and duplexes. They are a for-rent community. That's how it was originally presented to the council when we adopted the Hyde Park, uh, overall master plan. Again, the public hearing at the Plan Commission sent this forward with a favorable recommendation for adoption with an eight zero zero vote.
Any questions? Any questions for Mr. Schenever?
I guess I could have been nice and showed you an actual plan, a development plan here. But as you can see, this area in here would actually be, um, the commercial portion, this being the residential, the pond that is currently existing or under construction, and then the area north, again, would be residential.
This doesn't appear to have changed since our introduction.
I'm sorry?
This is not, this has not changed since our introduction. It looks
That is correct.
The same. Any other questions? Comments?
I'd say the only thing is it did come before us at ARB. We, you and I looked at it with other folks from ARB, and we had some feedback there. We looked at it at ARB.
Yes.
As well.
It was at ARB?
Yep.
These are basically, uh, some of the units that were approved.
That's a sampling of what was basically approved by the ARB. That looks familiar.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 33-07-24 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 330724 in a second. There's a roll call vote.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Boyes.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 34-07-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 340724 in a second. There's a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyes.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 350724 and ordinance adopting a change of land use category from industrial office with an additional overlay of government use and a character overlay of internal to single-family residential with a sub-district overlay of mixed residential for approximately 50 acres, and a change of land use category from office flex to commercial with a sub-district overlay of 146th Street corridor for approximately 60 acres, total of 110 acres, a part of the Corporate Campus Plan Development District north of East 146th Street between Howe Road and Promise Road.
Move to introduce.
And council to consider ordinance 360724 and ordinance adopting a preliminary development plan, including waivers for mixed-use development of 110 acres for single-family residential, town homes, and commercial uses, a part of the Corporate Campus Plan Development District north of East 146th Street between Howe Road and Promise Road.
Move to introduce.
Move to introduce.
Can I second both those? You can have this one. No, you're good. I wanted to make sure we were good.
Are you done? Joyce Ann Yelton.
Thank you.
They just get longer and longer.
Again, this preliminary development plan, if you're looking along the south, here is 146th Street, Howe Road running along the west side, Promise Road running along the east side. Again, it is for a proposed, what we would consider as a mixed-use development that will include retail office, single-family, a townhome project, and a Kroger marketplace and fuel center. Basically, you are looking at the Kroger marketplace being in this area here. Their fuel center would be located at the corner. There are several outlots. The single-family is to the north. We have a proposed use of townhomes in this area. Again, continuing along 146th Street and Promise Road, retail or office-type outlots. Internally, we have proposed for, again, maybe inline tenant buildings. The other proposal for that area is slightly different. In the area that we have here of the three or four smaller buildings, that could possibly be a larger user with the remainder of that just being parking. Again, within the ordinance, they have addressed both of these preliminary development plans in a satisfactory manner. This is for a Kroger marketplace. So, it is what I'm going to call their upscale store that has more choices in it. Again, it's a part of the corporate campus. Public hearing was held at the plan commission. ARB did review the single-family dwellings and did send them forward with a favorable recommendation of approval. Again, this was sent forward to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption on both of these ordinances by an eight-zero-zero vote.
Any questions for Joyce Ann Yelton or Matt Skelton? There was a correspondence from the neighbor to the west. Did everybody receive that? I think there was a correspondence from Carter Jackson. I just want to make sure that petitioner received that and had a chance to respond Came all this way, so.
Yeah, did you, you would like me to respond?
I know, I just wanted to make sure you got it and had a chance to.
We did. Matt Skelton, for your record, to North Ninth Street here in Noblesville. Yeah, we actually had a sit-down meeting with Carter and connected with him.
That's really what I wanted to know. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 35-07-24 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 350724 in a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wilds.
Aye.
Mr. Boyes.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 36-07-24 as presented.
Second.
Does the motion approve ordinance 360724 in a second? This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wilds.
Aye.
Mr. Boyes.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Eight aye, zero nay, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Counsel to consider resolution RC 2924, a resolution concerning approval of annual tax abatement compliance forms. Amy Smith.
Good evening. Each year, businesses with an active tax abatement must submit a compliance form in order to receive the abatement for that year. This resolution approves the compliance forms for real and personal property. Overall, there are 28 tax abatements. This includes 21 real property and seven personal property abatements. Of those 28, two will end this year, and five will end next year. The estimated investment of the active real property abatements is approximately 203 million with a gross assessed value of around 210 million. The businesses with active real property abatements estimated creating 2,232 jobs, and this year reported 2,168 actual jobs. Similarly, businesses with a personal property abatement estimated creating 2,000, sorry, yes, 2,200, no, sorry, 1,947 jobs and reported 1,581 actual jobs. Additionally, you will recall a new requirement implemented under this administration where abatement recipients must demonstrate their engagement as a community partner. This engagement can include financial contributions, volunteering, and participating in events around Noblesville. This year, there are 10 businesses that must report on their activities, and some of those activities include hosting a community day, welcoming almost 3,000 guests, for facility tours, family activities, and hands-on STEM activities, volunteering hours towards community initiatives, including trail cleanup and tree plantings, donations to Noblesville School sports teams and school carnival auctions, adopting families through the Angel Tree Program, hosting Noblesville High School interns, participating with Project Lead the Way Advisory Board, and attending meetings of the STEM Today and Tomorrow Club. They also sponsor many fundraising events throughout the community, including the Prevail Bowl-Athon, the Chamber of Commerce Golf Outing, and the Havel Fest, to name a few. We look forward to seeing these businesses continue to engage with our community and become a fabric, weave into the fabric of it. This item was presented to Finance Committee and received a favorable recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions but would ask for your approval.
Mr. President, only one comment, just outstanding amount of work and a tremendous amount of data gathering, if you will, to keep track of the many, many projects we have going on. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve resolution RC-29-24 as presented.
Second.
Does the motion approve resolution RC 2924 in a second? This is a hand vote. Call's in favor, raise your right hand. Aito.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel to receive summary of fiscally neutral second quarter appropriation transfers pursuant to resolution RC 0124. Caitlin Moss.
Hello, Caitlin Moss, Deputy Controller. RC 124 is a resolution that we pass every year that allows the Controller's Office to make some technical, fiscally neutral appropriation transfers. These transfers are only allowed to be made in very specific situations as allowed by the resolution, and we then submit a report to all of you on a quarterly basis showing these transfers. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? The Finance Committee looked at this. Were you all happy with the two items that weren't quite fit the mold? Everyone was comfortable? Okay.
Yep. Yes. Very much so. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nothing to vote on. Counsel to receive a summary of appropriation of second quarter grant proceeds pursuant to resolution RC 0224. Caitlin Moss.
Similar to RC 1, RC 2 was passed annually, and it allows the Controller's Office to appropriate grant proceeds when the grant specifies the situations in which they may be used. We then submit a report to you on a quarterly basis showing these appropriations that we have made. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you for your work with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Caitlin.
That concludes our business. Are there any council comments? Congratulations on the successful Fourth of July, everyone. Everyone size their fingers? Seeing no other comments, we're adjourned.
Thank you.